It is now six thirty, and I ask that if you would please bow your heads for a word of invocation, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, we gather here today in an intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task this evening. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faith gives us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. And I pray this special prayer in Jesus' name, and those that do agree, you may say amen.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. I now call for a motion to accept the agenda as published.
Remove.
We have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The purpose of this public meeting is that by law, if the governing body is contemplating increasing property taxes, three public hearings are to be held to allow public input into the proposed increase in taxes. We had the first meeting this morning at nine thirty a.m. This evening's meeting is meeting two. And meeting number three will be held at nine thirty a.m. on Thursday, July the twenty-seventh, when the millage rate is finalized. This now constitutes a public hearing. I would like to call our county manager, Sherri Hopson Matthews, and staff forward to give our presentation. And afterwards, each citizen will be allowed up to three minutes each for public comment. Also, before that time, we'll allow the board to make comments. So now we'll yield the floor to the county manager at this time.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Again, we are here to present public hearing number two regarding our millage rate. As we indicated this morning, staff did have a tedious task of determining what to recommend to the Board of Commissioners as it pertains to the setting of our millage rate. As you all are aware, the Board of Commissioners did adopt our fiscal year eighteen budget. And as a result of adopting that budget, there were a lot of individual items that were identified as some capital needs that we, as a county, needed to look at. So what we're going to do this evening is, again, go through a presentation. And I would ask that if you have any specific questions, that you hold those questions until the end of the presentation. But we will also add some additional things to our presentation that were not, that wasn't a part of the presentation this morning as a result of some of the questions that were raised. Just in order to make sure that we're being transparent, this is the same presentation that we did present this morning at nine thirty. But again, there are some additional items that we're going to discuss because of some questions that were raised. As I mentioned earlier, we did adopt our FY eighteen budget. And in the FY eighteen budget, we did adopt the budget with property taxes being eighty-two million seven seventy-seven. Obviously, there are other sources of revenue, but property taxes represent about fifty-four percent of our budget, which is over half of where we receive our revenues. There are other items as well with our sales and use tax, our licenses and permits, charges for other services, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous revenues, and other sources. But again, fifty-four percent of our budget does come from our revenues. I think it's important to state at this point that while our property tax revenues increased, we still had to use six point six million dollars of fund balance, which was not available through property taxes, in order to balance our budget. Okay, so let's talk about what happened with our FY eighteen budget. In FY seventeen, the Board of Commissioners adopted a budget of a hundred and forty-two point five million dollars. After the budget was adopted, there were approximately thirty-two budget amendments that were made, which resulted in about two point five million dollars. And so the total budget adopted for FY seventeen, including those amendments, would have been one forty-five, one twelve. What's interesting about this is that when the budget was adopted at the one forty-two five, there were no capital items included in that budget. A number of the amendments that were made after the budget was adopted were capital items. They were emergency capital expenditures that we had to do something about. So when we went into our FY eighteen budget, we knew that we were going to have a shortfall. There were some operational needs that we needed to address. There were some items due to Spalts projects that had been completed that we were going to have to include in our budget. We went into the FY eighteen budget with an operational need of nine point two million dollars. When the FY eighteen budget was adopted, the board approved it at a hundred and fifty-four point three million dollars, again with no capital projects included in that budget. Now, I talked to you all during the budget cycle about the initial requests that came in from all of our departments. And if you'll notice, the FY eighteen initial department request was two hundred and one million dollars. Within that, or two hundred and one million dollars, and within that two hundred and one million dollars, it was thirty-two million dollars in capital requests. I will talk about capital requests later on in the presentation. So I'll get into some details on that later. Now, again, let's talk about that excess fund balance review. If you'll remember, early in my presentation, I did indicate that while we did receive our property tax revenues, at the time that we adopted our budget, the projections for our collections was much higher. After the budget was adopted, those projections actually were lower. And the reason those projections were lower, obviously, were because of some of the exemptions which resulted in that lower number. Our remaining FY sixteen balance for our fund balance was eleven point one million dollars. We needed six point six million dollars for FY eighteen. And I'll get into the next slide to tell you what those needs were. After we incorporated the six point six million dollars worth of needs, it left our balance at four point five million dollars. And then the Board of Commissioners did adopt a resolution which caps our fund balance at twenty-five percent, which is the two point nine million dollars, taking our FY sixteen ending fund balance to one point six million dollars. So what were those needed items? We were notified by our insurance carrier that we were going to see a substantial increase in our health insurance in the tune of about four point three million dollars. The Board of Commissioners did elect to take on that additional health insurance cost, adding no additional expenses to the employees. We had salaries for our newly opened rec center and senior services center in Hampton at a cost of about two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. We had salaries for our fire department stations, number fifteen and sixteen. Fire station fifteen has recently opened, and fire station sixteen is actually under construction. That set a cost of about one point seven million dollars. We also did an additional allocation for the library. In addition to the one point eight million dollars that we budgeted and provided to the library, we also provided an additional allocation of five hundred thousand dollars. There were new positions that were added for four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And then the board did elect to give a two percent across-the-board raise for all of our employees that were non-public safety. Again, that was seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. The board also previously developed a public safety reset program. And in keeping with the commitment made by the board, the salary increases for public safety, one percent plus one percent, which was a total of two percent, was also given to all public safety officers and public safety staff at a cost of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And then we also included all of the salary increases for certifications that may occur for this FY eighteen year at a cost of five hundred thousand dollars. So if you'll see, that is the total nine point five million dollars that we had to have at the beginning of developing our FY eighteen budget. So let's talk about the millage.
All right, Commissioners, good evening. I'm the chair, Commissioners. What was not included in this year's FY eighteen budget? We spoke on Tuesday night about our capital needs. And about thirty million dollars, it was kind of narrowed down by our Director of Facilities, Director of Fleet, to come up with about a fifteen million dollars need. And it's not just vehicles, facilities, and IT. It encompasses stuff that happened over the years. We have, late nineteen nineties, early two thousands, we had a rapid increase in Henry County in building, both buildings and the community. But then the roofs on buildings, the infrastructure, is definitely deteriorating over time. Also, some of the fleet, the moving vehicles, are also looking at timing out some of as old as twenty-five years. So if you look at the fleet replacements in Tier One, Community Services has two passenger vans, Commissioners' County Managers, three support vehicles, Henry County DOT, two F-150 trucks, facilities. It has F-150 crew cab, F-250 crew cab, Toro tractor, fire EMS, two fire engines, five ambulances, seven support vehicles, two F-350 brush truck remounts, and remounts, or just the chassis of the apparatus to remount the tanks and all on the new truck. The two ladder trucks, we're proposing leasing them ladder trucks in a lease-turn-in program. So our leased vehicles will actually turn in after a seven-year period when they outdate the ladder trucks. At this time, we're spending more money on maintenance than we are a yearly payment for a lease on outdated equipment. Also, three, or twenty self-contained breathing apparatus to replace old and outdated equipment. And the Police Department, nineteen chargers, a Tahoe, four expeditions for our crime scene units, and five of the speed trailers that you guys mentioned being very important in deterring speeding in subdivisions in our local communities. And it goes back to our, to our community policing aspect of getting more involved in areas within the county. Our Rec Department will be two passenger vans and three F-250 crew cab trucks for our groundskeeping crews. Citizen enforcement has an Impala. Ten interceptors, police vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. Senior Services, a Ford Escape, F-150 pickup, and a tax assessor, a Ford Escape vehicle. That was our rolling stock needs from our fleet. Our facility needs for repair is the airport, three hangars need some airport, I mean, need maintenance, mainly with doors, replacing some of the stuff that was taken out when it was abandoned before. Building for the corner, or a location, put the cooler area for a corner for, to do his services. The courts replaced the presentation equipment. Facilities, office warehouse, storage building. We have already purchased, a few years back, a building that is on the grounds that we're at DOT that can be erected to provide services for them in a new facility. Which the good thing about this is we had depleted our file storage facility area, and this building could be basically sectioned off in half to provide a storage area for our needed files. Roof repair or replacement on the following buildings. Administration, facilities, ninety-sixth Work Camp Road, Development Building, Fire Stations one, two, or one, three, and five. The probate court, Hidden Valley Rec Center, Heritage Center, Fairview Center, connecting Henry and Forty Atlanta Street. We also had a public safety complex AC units. Repairs to the courthouse, repairs and maintenance to the Judicial Center. In Fleet Services, we have diesel tank repaired at our facility that does our diesel fueling stations. Station six, we're generator for the pumps. There is not currently a generator for backup power in the north end of our county for our fuel pumps. A multiplex scan tool, security system for our DOT grounds. And the area Technology Services, fiber switch to the admin building and Sheriff's Office. Annexes switched at the annex building. Replace forty-five hundred switches, and that is a forty-five hundred brand. It's not forty-five hundred as a number, it's a type of switch used in IT. Install new network switches, upgrade phone system, replace email failover switches, and relocate the fiber in the Phillips Drive building, and also have costs for demolition of that building on Phillips Drive. Recreation, replace exercise equipment in various facilities. Replace various fencing at parks. Stage for Nash Farms. Replace workout equipment at various rec centers. Scoreboards, resurface tennis courts at Hidden Valley, Richard Craig and McDonough Playground Equipment for Nash Farms Rec Center. Sheriff's Department, the old jailed annex needs a roof also. That completes our priority one. What did not make the list to end up the fifteen million total request is roof repairs on Fire Stations seven, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Roof replacement on the Public Safety Annex. Floor replacement at the Fairview Rec Center. Dog park enhancements. Playground equipment for Hampton Locust Grove Rec Centers. Replace old section of the jail that needs, and needs repair. Fiber line installation for the Spalding County to Admin Building. Update visual aid equipment throughout the county. Internet failover, disaster recovery, wireless access points replacement, and expand a DELL SAN in our IT facility, IT needs. Our fleet, non-funding, or non-requests is John Deere evac equipment, animal control, F-250, code enforcement, F-150, fleet, F-350 heavy lift truck, a Tahoe, and additional charges for the Police Department, and a F-150 and escape for the fleet, I mean, for Recreation Center. And that concludes our, kind of our Tier Two unfunded area. So we looked at millage options to consider. And this is a consideration for the board on where to go from here. In two thousand and sixteen, the millage rate was twelve point seven three three. This option generates eighty-one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eight dollars in tax collection, which results in a negative one hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen shortfall that Ms. Matthews discussed earlier. This will be used in FY eighteen budget. It also includes the nine million, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars. And that's with a twenty-five percent fund, continuation of fund balance needs. This option results in seven million, seven point six, or six point seven million dollars in fund balance next year. And that is assuming there's no increase in our tax budget, tax digest. Staff proposed in two thousand and seventeen millage is thirteen point seven three three. This option generates eighty-seven point eight million in tax collection and will result in reducing the use of fund balance to nine, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eighty-nine dollars in FY nineteen budget. One of the goals that the Commission set forward for us and our team was to work our way towards non-use of fund balance to balanced budget every year. And this is one way we look at achieving that.
Okay, I'll get into some of the details in terms of what the difference would look like in terms of the twelve point seven three three and the thirteen point seven three three. But before I move forward, I do want to make sure I reemphasize, when we start talking about setting our millage rates, that's something that we at a staff level do internally, based on our adopted budget, based on our capital needs, based on all of the needs that we've identified at the county level. And we do have internal deadlines in terms of posting that millage rate or setting the millage rate. I know there's been several questions raised in terms of who determines what the millage rate is. Obviously, the Board of Commissioners sets the millage rate. But the recommendation comes from the County Manager's Office in consultation with our staff. And I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that and that the citizens that are here tonight understand that the recommendation to include this thirteen, or increase it by one mill is a result of us evaluating what our needs are as an organization, what we feel our needs are based on what you all have told us as Commissioners, and then developing a future plan for how to move forward. We don't want to have to come to the board every year and ask to increase the millage rate. But what we've identified over the last six months is that there's really no strategic plan or capital improvement plan for how to move forward. I think Brad mentioned it, and he listed a number of vehicles. And I know that can be challenging because if the public doesn't want us spending a lot of money on just buying vehicles. The challenge is, we've never had a vehicle replacement plan. We have vehicles that have over two hundred thousand miles that employees are riding on, are riding in. And so it's very important for me to put that out there so that everyone can understand why we're at this point and what we're recommending. Okay, so our two thousand and seventeen millage proposed above the hundred percent tax rollback, again, is at thirteen point seven three three. This slide is very important because this is the number that a number of you all have probably received phone calls on. This is the information that's been published, and it is factual information. Thirteen point five one percent would be the total increase if the Board of Commissioners elects to set the millage rate at thirteen point seven three three. If you have a home that's valued at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you are assessed a forty percent. The assessed taxable value would be about sixty thousand dollars. A majority of our homeowners do file homestead exemption. So if you were to file that homestead exemption, you would receive that reduction of fifteen thousand based on the exemptions and then the taxable value of sixty thousand dollars, taking your taxed value, value to forty-five thousand. So what does this be? If the county were to do a hundred percent rollback, the millage would be twelve point oh nine eight. What staff is recommending is a proposed millage rate of thirteen point seven three three. The difference between those two would be one point six three five, which is how we were able to get to the thirteen point five one. The additional tax on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would be seventy-three fifty-seven. And on a two hundred and twenty-five thousand home, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home, a hundred and forty-seven point fifteen. This slide shows what I previously discussed, but it again shows the breakdown of how we were able to get it, get to the thirteen point five one. If the board elected to keep the millage rate at its current rate, at the twelve point seven three three, the percent of increase would be five point two five. Because the staff is recommending an increase of one mill, that's an additional mill, at eight point two seven percent, which takes again the total to thirteen point fifty-one. So what is the county portion only impact on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home or to, and a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homeowner at the current twelve point seven three three mills with homestead exemption? Again, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you see the forty percent assessed value, the homestead exemption on both homes. The taxable value would be forty-five thousand and eighty-five thousand dollars respectfully. And then keeping the twelve point seven three three current rate, your county tax would be five seventy-two ninety-nine. And then on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, a thousand eighty-two thirty-one. Now, I'll go back to that slide after I go through the thirteen point seven three three. So I'll kind of flip between both. So the impact on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, hundred, in two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, same homes, same assessed values, same exemptions, the increase over the twelve point seven three three would be forty-five dollars and eighty-five dollars respectfully. You'll notice that the county tax would be six seventeen ninety-nine versus the five seventy-two ninety-nine on the twelve point seven three three. And then one thousand, one sixty-seven thirty-one on thirteen point seven three three mills versus one thousand eighty-two thirty-one on the twelve point seven three three mills. So let's talk about our millage rate. Because when we talk about the rate and we talk only about the county portion, I think it's important for everyone to understand that the total millage rate includes various sources. We obviously have the county millage rate that is currently set at twelve point seven three three, which represents about thirty-three point two percent of the budget. But we also have our school board, M and O, and the school bond, which represents about sixty-one point six percent of the millage rate. And then we have the Water Authority bond at two mills, which represents about five point two percent. So of the total thirty-eight point three six one total millage rate, the county's portion is only thirty-three point two percent out of the hundred percent. Again, this would now be the difference between moving from the twelve point seven three three to the thirteen point seven three three. Again, taking you back to the previous twelve point seven three three, the county's percentage would be thirty-three point two percent. The county's percentage, if we were to add the one mill, would be thirty-four point nine. The school M and O would be fifty-two point one. And then the school M and O on the thirteen point seven three three would actually go down to fifty point eight because of the increase with the counties at the thirty-four point nine. School bond, nine point two. Previously, nine point five. Water, five point one percent. Previously, five point two. Total millage would be thirty-nine point three six one.
All right, let's talk about what services a mill provides. You look at your services, your public safety is fifty-three point eight percent of the budget, but it's six point eight five three of a mill. Legislative and executive services is thirteen point one percent of the budget, but one point six six seven of a mill. Judicial, one point four five of a mill. Public works, one point oh two five of a mill. Health and welfare, zero point five five three of a mill. Culture and recreation, zero point five five one. Debt Development Authority, zero point three six five. Housing and development, zero point two six nine, equaling the twelve point seven three three. That is our current millage rate at twelve point seven three three. If we look at the twelve, thirteen point seven three three in the same breakdown, it increases slightly with public safety taking point five three of an increase over the twelve point seven three three. The executive, point one three one. Judicial increased by point one one four. Public works, point zero eight zero. Health and welfare, zero point four three. Culture and recreation, zero, point zero four three. Development Authority and debt services, zero point two nine, I'm sorry, point zero two nine. Housing and development, point zero two one, totaling the thirteen point seven three three mills. And some of the questions come in about the legislative and executive services being the second highest at thirteen point one percent of the budget and the increase in the millage. But let's break down the legislative services and what, what that encompasses. It's not just high salaries at administration. But then does your tech services? Your IT, information technology services is seventeen point eight percent of the legislative services and point three one nine of a mill. Your facilities maintenance is point, point two nine three of that mill, at sixteen point three percent. Tax assessors, fourteen point eight percent, at zero point two six seven of a mill. Tax commissioner, thirteen point eight percent, at zero point two four seven of a mill. Risk management, eight point two percent of the budget. Zero point one four seven of a mill. Elections, five point two, at point zero nine four of a mill. Finance, five point zero, at point zero eight nine of a mill. The County Manager's Office, four point four, at point zero seven nine of that mill increase. Border Commissioners, four point oh, at point oh seven two. Human Resources, three point six, at point zero six five of a mill. Procurement, two point two percent, or point zero three nine percent of a mill. And public relations, two percent, point zero three six of a mill. County Attorney, one point eight, and zero point zero three three. And county clerk, point nine percent, at zero point one six of a mill.
Okay, so the allocation of tax dollars. I've gone over the various sources in terms of where we collect our millage rate. But I think it's also important to look at what that percentage equates to. Again, we've looked at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. And the slide on the overhead actually compares the twelve point seven three three and the thirteen point seven three three so that it can share a bigger picture of the difference in what that one mill would cost. Obviously, you have your county, school M and O, school bond, water, and then your total amount. And if you look at the twelve point seven three three on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home with the forty percent value at sixty thousand, the total allocation of tax dollars would be two thousand sixty-seven dollars. On the same home with the thirteen point seven three three, the total tax allocation of dollars would be two thousand forty-five.
I'll take the property value cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar residence at thirteen point seven three mills. You have legislative services. The yearly cost is seventy-six point six seven dollars, or zero point two one cents per day. Unallocated cost, thirty point thirty- Unallocated costs, 30.37 or .8 cents a day. Judicial systems, $66.66 for yearly cost or .18 cents a day. Public safety, $314.28 a year or 86 cents a day. Public works, 48.14 yearly cost dollars or 13 cents a day. Health and welfare, $25.80 or 7 cents a day. Culture and recreation, $26.06, 7 cents a day. Housing development, $12.33 or 3 cents a day. And other uses, $17.70 or 5 cents a day. Given our total for a $150,000 residence, $617.99, and that's at the 13.733 county millage The public safety section, to break it down a little further for the 13.733 rate, is police is $84.05 a day. Fire, $112, I'm sorry, not a day, a year, at 23 cents a day. Fire EMS, $112.50 a year at 30 cents a day. EMA, $1.36 a year, 4 cents or .004 cents a day. Communications, 911, 1.68 or .005 cents a day. Sheriff's administration is $48.22 a year or 13 cents a day. Joe operations, $56.38 a year or 15 cents a day. And other public safety is $10.09 or 3 cents a day total.
So we've gone over the 150,000 and again, this is a $250,000 home at the 12.733 and the 13.733. Again, same parameters, school, MNO, school bond, water, and then the county. You'll see that the total allocation of tax dollars on a $250,000 home valued at $100,000 on the current 12.733 county millage rate with standard exemptions, the cost will be On the $250,000 home, again, with the 40% value of $100,000 at 13.733, the cost will be $3,060. The increase would be $85.
Also swap back to the $225,000 residence and do the same comparison of 13.733 millage rate increase. Legislative and executive will be $127 a year. Unallocated, 50. Judicial systems, 111. Public safety, $523.80 a year. Public works, $80.24. Health and welfare, $43. Culture and recreation, $43.43. $20.55 for housing and development and $29.50 for other uses. That would give us a total of $1,029.98. Or just $2.87, 82 cents per day for all them services. Same thing with public safety. The same 3 points, 13.733, $225,000 assessed residence. Total that, police, $140 a day. Fire EMS, 187, 226 for EMA. $2.80 for public safety communications, 911. Sheriff administrations, $80.36. Joe operations, $93.96. Other public safety, 16.81, equaling $523.78 total yearly cost and a 1.435 cents per day.
So Board, there's a lot of information that we've gone over this morning and this evening pertaining to our current millage rate of 12.733 and the proposed millage rate being proposed by staff at 13.733. Obviously, we have a lot of needs in our county. Capital needs are critical to the county and to how we move forward as a county. We have deferred our capital needs for a number of years. And one thing that we are being challenged with is to make sure that not only our staff have the resources that they need, but they're able to effectively do their job with having vehicles that work. They're able to go into facilities that they're not worried about, is there going to be, is the roof going to leak? And I think we've patched it up for a number of years. At the beginning of my presentation, I mentioned that when the Board adopted the budget for FY '17, we had about 32 amendments to that budget adoption. And what that means is either, one, we needed to go back and look at our budget and determine, did we have everything that we needed? Or we needed to look at those capital projects that we've deferred for a number of years. What we don't want to do this year is to go into another year where we haven't identified what our capital needs are. Brad and all of the staff, we've looked at not only our priority one capital needs, but we've already started identifying those priority two and priority three needs. Our fleet services director in consultation with the county manager's office is already developing a vehicle replacement plan. We're looking at resources internally within our organization, and we recently adopted a new organizational chart to start evaluating where we need to be in this organization. Do we have a lot of duplication of services? Are there departments that could, could help each other in getting some things done? One thing that we've challenged the staff with and we've continued to challenge the staff to do is to be fiscally responsible. Do what you need to do to effectively run your departments. And I think what you've seen in our budget presentation and what we're recommending to the Board is just that. We've identified what our needs are. We have a lot of wants, and I think I said that at the beginning of the presentation, that the initial request was $32 million. We were able to go back, look at what do we have to have to continue to run our county? And we are pleased to present that our capital needs, we were able to drop that down below that 32 million to $10 million. Now, we do have to think about how are we going to fund those capital needs? This is one recommendation. Obviously, the Board will set the millage rate and the county management staff will have to come back to the Board with options in terms of how to fund our capital projects. But in our first look at it, in our first look at what we needed for the county, this was our recommendation to you all. Now, I do know this morning there were several questions that were raised. A number of the questions pertain to the Board of Education, but I did feel it necessary to go back over some of those questions so that those individuals that may not have been here this morning can hear some of the questions that were raised. Again, I will tell you that we are trying to address any and all questions that anyone has, so if we don't have an answer for you, we will be more than happy to follow up with not only the commissioners, but with those citizens who may have concerns as well. One of the questions raised this morning pertained to the Board of Education's budget. I do want everyone here tonight to know that the Board of Commissioners is separate from the Board of Education. The Board of Education has their own elected officials or elected officials and they set their own budget. Their budget that is set is not set by the Board of Commissioners. Their millage rate that is set obviously is a part of our millage rate setting, but the Board of Education determines what their capital needs are, what their operational needs are, and what their needs are for the school board. So that was one question that came up this morning in terms of the Board of Education. There was also a question raised in terms of, did we adopt a balanced budget? I mentioned this morning that the state law requires that we have to adopt a balanced budget. Our budget was adopted and it was balanced, but we did have to use about 6 million, 6.6 million dollars from our fund balance to balance that budget. And one thing we don't want to have to continue to do is to use fund balance to balance our budget. What's important is that we have a lot of needs as an organization. And yes, we have increased our budget year after year after year, but we've also been stagnant in some of our millage rates in terms of what we're able to, to bring in. I did mention early on that during the adoption of the budget, our projected revenues for our property taxes was much higher than what the actual revenues are to date. And again, that was based on some exemptions. During the meeting this morning, there was also a question raised in terms of commercial properties, if they were taxed as well. And I did indicate that, yes, they are taxed, those commercial properties are taxed at a higher rate. I did ask our chief appraiser, John Self, to come in this evening just to answer any questions that the Board may have. And more particularly, I think there was a question raised by Commissioner Holmes that we wanted to make sure that we responded to. So at this time, if the Board is okay, I would like to ask Mr. Self to come up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, how are you?
Good evening.
As far as the taxation of commercial, industrial, or residential properties, they're all assessed and taxed at the same rate. Obviously, they could have different millage rates depending on what districts they're in, but they're all at 40%. Now, where it does differ is that we follow market value. If you have a, a large industrial building, it's going to be significant, significantly higher value than a residential home. So that, I hope, does that explain that question? I don't know, who, who raised that question? Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, maybe, unless you remember.
Okay.
My question was about the surplus in fund balance we had a year ago. Last year, we had a surplus of 21 million, so I was wondering where we, we're at this year. And also, I had a question with regards to the average percent in value, properties have increased this year. Those are my two questions.
I'll let John answer the latter part. I'll respond to the fund balance question. As I mentioned this morning, we have not closed out our books for this fiscal year. Conservatively, we're looking at between eight to 12 million dollars in fund balance, but obviously, once we close out our books, we will be able to provide a more definitive answer to the Board. If we find that it's higher than that 12 million, then certainly, we're going to come back to the Board and, and provide that as an option for some of our capital project needs.
As far as the averages, I, I think I was kind of prepared to talk, to talk about the residential homes. The, the average subdivision home increased in value from 155,000 average, rounded, excuse me, to 166,000, roughly a 7% gain year over year. If we look at all of the improved residential properties, homes, they, it went up from 151,000 to 162,000, roughly 7.5%. Some of the growth, and this, this would be inflationary growth or increase in market value. Some of the gross statistics that you're looking at also includes real growth, which is additional buildings, things of that nature. The, I guess some raw numbers, if it would help with your broader question. The residential as, as a whole, which includes a tremendous, not a tremendous amount, but several different property types. And to explain that briefly, we deal with about 81 use codes of property. So within these larger categories, we have a lot of subcategories. So, but, but residential is roughly grossed at, at nine. And I think you mentioned, commercial was basically flat at negative 1.5.
I was primarily speaking about residential across the board.
Okay.
I mean, over the past number of years, we've had double-digit increases in value.
Yes, sir.
And so I'm trying to figure out what that number is in fiscal year '17.
Yes, sir, it's comfortably in single digits and what I would consider healthy.
What do you anticipate next year?
You know, we, we value it on January 1 and we'll look at those sales when we get it about that time. I would tell you that I would anticipate a healthy growth, maybe similar to what we've seen through this past cycle.
Okay, so given the fact that we've had comfortable, comfortable increase in percentage, how do you compare a value, the value of this year's mill versus last year's?
Value, value of this year's versus last year's?
Right.
Within the residential categories, just in market value, roughly 7 to 7.5% on average. Now, obviously, there are some of the, the properties that are higher in percentage and some of that are lower. You know?
What is the actual dollar amount of a mill this year versus last year?
On a mill?
Yes.
I would have to refer to.
You know that number?
It's about 6.1 million per mill.
What was it a year ago?
I'm being told 5.4 million.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Holmes?
No, I'm good.
Okay. And I think I had a question that also related to the value of the mill, but it went all the way back to the pre-recession days and to kind of give us a highlight of, you know, where are the value of that one mill is compared to back in, say, 2007 compared to where we are now? Because property values, of course, declined during the economic downturn and then we had some trends of increasing. And so we, we did have that, that discussion earlier today that may be educational for our citizens.
Yes, ma'am, I'd have to refer to county manager on that.
I've placed on the overhead a 10-year history of our tax digests, tax digest, collections and millage rate. If you'll notice, in 2007, our collections were at about $67.7 million with the millage rate of 11.2. And then in 2008, our collections went up, but the millage rate actually went down. It showed about a 5.9% increase, but again, the collections went down. In 2009, you'll notice that the collections went down slightly, the millage rate remained the same, but there was also a decrease of about 0.9% increase. 2010, 2011, you'll notice that, again, the collections continued to go down. While the millage rate did go up, you will see in the year 2010, our collections were down and the millage rate was up. It was at 11.75. The increase of that millage rate was about 0.781 and the, the increase was about a 7.1% increase. If you look at 2012, 2013, we started to pick back up in terms of the $65 million collection, $66 million collection, but our millage rate was at its all-time high at that point. We were at 14.5 and 14.497. So our numbers were, the collections were still going down, although the millage rate was much higher. And then in 2014, we did start picking up in terms of a $72 million collection with the millage rate being at 14.298. 2015, we're continuing to pick up with the millage rate dropping at 13.873. And then this fiscal year 2016, we're showing that the millage rate actually went, the collections actually went down, as did the millage rate. Now, if you'll notice at the bottom of the spreadsheet, I'm showing for 2017, a 12-point and a 13-point. That's 12.733 and 13.733. If we were to keep the millage rate at the 12.733, our collections would be approximately $81.2 million, and that would be an increase, our collection increase of about 4.9 million. If we were to increase it at 13.733, our collections would be $87 million, which would result in about 11.5, 11.5 million, which is the increase of 15.1%. If you'll notice, or if you'll recall, when Mr. Johnson did his presentation, the capital projects that we were looking to fund totaled about $10 million. So I think that's important for us to highlight in terms of staff's thought process, in terms of adding this additional mill to take care of so much needed items.
Okay, well, what we'll do, we'll now just offer any other questions from the Board at this time before we begin the public comments section. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner Prince?
Sherri, thanks, thanks so much for bringing us here. And I really don't have a question, I just need to perfect the record on something. And if you're here this morning, you already heard this. There was a newspaper article that ran that said, "Board of Commissioners Seek to Raise Millage Rate." That is not actually accurate. Staff has recommended raising the millage rate. As for your fourth district commissioner, I have no intent in raising the millage rate. So I just wanted to get that out there. And the second thing, we had a lot of questions about the Board of Education, how they spend their money and such forth. We don't get involved at all with the Board of Education's operations. So I just want the public to know that before they come up here and start asking us questions about how the BOE does theirs or set their millage or anything like that. But with that, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay?
Chair, would if I may?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Self wants to make clarification on some information he's provided.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes, to your question, as far as the, the growth numbers, the, the numbers that I gave you to clarify are gross numbers, so it doesn't include the exemptions that are in place. Then, you know, the net would be several or a few percentage points less than that as far as net.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from staff or from the Board? Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Sherri, I know that there is a part in our booklet that you didn't cover, and it was one of the questions that I asked this morning about the other funding recommendations. I just want the citizens to know that the recommendation and to raise the taxes is not, you know, the be-all, end-all for us, that there are other options that we have as a county to come up with these funds. So I don't want people to think that just because there's a recommendation that we're going to fall short, we won't have the monies that we need to operate the county. There are other options that we have besides putting this burden on citizens.
Absolutely. And Commissioner Clemens, I do apologize for that because there are other options that we can look at. that we can look at, um, countywide. There are grant opportunities that are out there, um, but when you talk about the scale of some of the capital projects, you do have to look at maybe leasing options, bonding options. And I think in talking to a number of the board members, we don't want to get into doing a lot of lease purchases or at least bonding, um, options. And so this was the staff's first stab at saying, if we don't want to bond, if we don't want to do lease purchasing as options, maybe looking at the increase of the millage rate. Again, nothing is off the table. Nothing has been decided. This is just the first initial step. And if there's things that we're missing at the staff level, we will certainly, um, look to make sure that when we come back to the board with a recommendation on our capital projects, that we're putting everything out there. Um, there are a lot of opportunities for us to look at what our capital needs are beyond the vehicles, beyond the, um, the, the replacement vehicles and beyond the capital needs, but we will have to look at how we're going to fund, fund those. Um, obviously, for staff, increasing the millage rate, um, proved to be the easiest process, and maybe I shouldn't say easiest, but proved to be the better solution for us rather than coming to the board, asking them to bond. Um, but again, those are things that we're going to have to talk, talk through, and staff will come to you all with some recommendations on that as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other, okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Chair, could you, could you hit on the bonding for a minute? How, we're talking about rolling stock, and if we talk about bonding this equipment, how long that bond's going to last?
I will, what I'll do is I'll defer to Mr. Alletta, because he's actually been charged with going ahead, pulling some information. So I'll let Mr. Alletta come up here and, um, just give you a very brief synopsis on what that would look like.
Well, maybe, why don't you, Sharon, maybe you can cover the total bonding of your ten-million dollars? Okay?
And Sharon, it looks like it's ten million, because it looks like if the millage rate stays the same with the fact that the property values are going up, we still will get an extra five-million dollars because the property values are going up. So the bond doesn't have to be the entire ten-million.
Well, if the millage rate stays at that twelve-point-seven-three-three, our collections will not be, we won't receive the eleven-million. We'll actually be, give me one second.
Five.
Five-million. So we would have to go back and look at, um, our capital needs. But again, keeping in mind.
Or bond the difference.
Or bond the difference, or, once we close out our books, looking to see what's in our fund balance.
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Alletta.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, to the point of bonding, um, I've taken a look at two different options. One is a straight bond for the total amount, and then the other one is working with our bank sun trust. And in doing so, because of the items that are included, some would have to be on one form, and then the others would be at a different form of debt. Uh, I've worked with both of them, so that what basically would happen is the debt would go out about seven to eight years. What the intent was, is to keep the budget that we have this year for debt to be identical throughout the next seven years. So instead of increasing the budget year after year after year, because we borrowed money, what we have right now is a lot of our debt is falling off. For a county our size, we only have, we don't have that much debt. And the, right, as of right now, the county, if didn't borrow any money, would have zero debt in FY twenty-one, twenty-two. And for a county our size not to have any debt, at that point, just like any business, everybody runs on debt. The county is about a eight-hundred-million-dollar assets, so you can see that amount of debt's very little. But the debt that we presently have will work itself out to, to zero if we don't bond anything else, borrow anymore. So the way I set it up at this point, or would recommend, is that we would pay the interest only, which would be added to the current debt that would be paid, so that we would level out at about three-point-five-million a year in debt and principal payments for the next seven years, which is no different than what's in the current year's budget. So as a result, you aren't using taxpayer money in increasing a budget every year to pay debt. And you would be able to get that amount of money, uh, available to take care of the equipment. As I said, if it's either done through the bank or done through bonds, it all comes out the same. Um, effective interest rate was, it's been going up. The effective interest rate I have on both is between three-point-three and three-point-four-five, depending upon which one we use. So it's rather cheap, um, still, and, um, interest rates have been going up a quarter, uh, percent the last couple, the last six months. They could go up again in September, they're saying, maybe in December and again next year. So the rate today would be a savings if we borrowed it today instead of waiting to next year to do it, if it was under a bonding or a debt, debt program, let's call it.
All right. Uh, okay. Commissioner Holmes?
The subject came up. Um, just the other day, um, this board voted to support bonding to pay for private dams, to repair da- private dams. Um, how, how will that impact, um, bonding for, uh, for, uh, capital projects moving forward if we're, if we're bonding to pay for a number of, um, private dams throughout the county? With, using public money, of course.
I've talked to our, um, bond people, and I've talked with our accountant, CPAs, because it has two effects. One is, what are we going to do in recording it as debt on the books? And then the other, of course, is for bond ratings and so on and so forth. There's a nu- there's a couple of ways to do it, they've suggested. I, I don't have my notes with me, but basically, depending upon how we bond it or what mechanism you use, uh, would depend as to whether it would go against us on our balance sheet as debt, and it may not be on our balance sheet, and thus, it would stay off our balance sheet as debt.
If we bond, it would have to go on the balance sheet as debt?
Well, yes and no. The only, the reason I say it wouldn't, and again, there's various scenarios, one reason would be, is that it is collateralized by the property tax, future taxes, that each of the owners are going to pay, that we would collect to make the payment.
But how do you calculate future risk? Like, uh, future housing crisis or something to that effect? I'm pretty sure they factor that in when, uh, when you're bonding.
Well, again, the, the, when it, again, the mechanism by which you set this up with those residents, that homeowners association, would be such that they would be taxed, a particular figure on their tax bill, all the owners, and that bill, those added together would be sufficient to cover the amount of, uh, tax payment, or the principal and interest payments each year. And that would be, as I understand it, a part of your agreement with those homeowners in that, uh, association, that they would be obligated to pay that through our tax bills.
So will they factor in the risk, future risk? Um, say there's another housing crisis? How, how does that impact, um, bonding and also our bond rating?
Again, there's numerous ways and I, that I've been told, but one of the things, it's, it's like today, you have a single line item for streetlights, or you have a single line item today for, um. Stormwater, thank you. Stormwater. This would be another line item that would be fixed, whereas today, your value goes up and down, millage goes up and down, and the taxes collected, as these meetings are all about, affects that. That line item would be fixed based on the total amount of dollars that are needed to pay, whatever that annual bond principal and interest is, divided by the homeowners that are part of that association. So it's a fixed figure. It doesn't go up or down.
But if we experience another two thousand and eight, there won't be any homeowners in those homes. Most of the homes will be foreclosed. So how do you, how do we pay back? How do we, how do we pay back to bond, the bond, the bonding companies at that particular time? That's, that's my question.
But the only thing I could tell you, again, this, the research I'm doing and is just doing is to take and figure out some of the things you're asking, but the only other thing I'd tell you is, if nobody's living in it, the bank forecloses, the bank owns it, the bank owns the property taxes, and thus, they would owe that line item within the tax bill.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Prince?
I think I can answer that question. I buy quite a bit of foreclosed property, um, and the first thing that I have to do when I purchase foreclosed property is pay the back taxes. So there, there's really no way to get out of paying taxes. I mean, one, if, if there was a way to get out of paying taxes, people would figure that out a long time ago. So in, in answer to that question, I believe if there was another downturn, when somebody purchased the home, as we all know, you got to pay the back taxes. Everybody's done that. So that just is a answer to the question.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Okay. And the comments before we open for.
Sure. What I did want to put a, a slide on the overhead to just go over our fund balance for me, to make sure that I answered Commissioner Clemens's question correctly. When we prepared our budget for this year, we had a remaining FY sixteen balance of eleven-point-one-million dollars, and we needed that six-point-six-million dollars to actually balance the budget. So when we balanced the budget, that took us down to four-point-five-million dollars, and then we had to keep our twenty-five percent per the resolution, which took us to two-point-nine. So our FY sixteen ending balance is one-point-six. And that's important, because if we keep the millage rate at that twelve-point-seven-three-three, that would be the FY sixteen ending balance. I think I may have said five-million, but I was thinking about the thirteen-point-seven-three-three millage rate versus the twelve-point-seven-three-three. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Actually, it was the other slide where you went through the ten-year period and the differences in the, um, millage rate that we had collected and changed. I, I think that, that the thing that I'm trying to get at is that, I, I think that this is the, uh, not the perfect solution, and we don't want to burden, um, any of us, because we all pay taxes. Um, and if we're looking at the twelve-point-seven-three-three for twenty-sixteen, and it was seventy-six-million collected, and we keep that at twelve-seven-three-three for twenty-seventeen, twelve, we're going to collect eighty-one-million. Is that correct?
That is correct. If we keep it at the twelve-point-seven-three-three, we will collect eighty-one-point-two-seven-million.
So if we don't raise taxes, we're going to collect the difference of the seventy-six and eighty-one, and since we're bonding for private properties that we all don't live in, it would make sense that we would bond for the difference instead of putting this burden on the taxpayers. So I, you know, I think that's the point that I'm trying to make, because we will have it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson?
I want to clarify, though. She mentioned about raising taxes, though, if we stay at twelve-seven-seven-three and our, and our, um, prices went up, we're going to actually have a tax increase. But is, is it correct?
We're going to have a millage increase. So that's, that's going to be, that's a.
I just wanted to clarify.
Excuse me. Okay. We're going to let one, uh, Commissioner at a time. Commissioner Wilson has the floor. So go ahead, Commissioner.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay. All right. Well, at this time, uh, we would now like to invite any citizen wishing to speak on this matter to come forward. Uh, we will remind you that you will have three minutes to speak, and if you would state your name and address for the record, um, we will begin with our first individual. Good evening.
Bill Tony, uh, live, I live in McDonough. I really don't know why we're here, uh, about a tax increase. I'm, I've talked to three of the six of you, and you were dead against a tax increase. So I, I don't, I don't get it. I think, uh, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Barham, and, uh, Mr. Prince. You know, what I, what I don't understand is we've got over fifty-two-million dollars worth of land surplus. We've made no efforts to get rid of any properties. We got a golf course that's sucking us dry, and we have no, you have no intentions of getting rid of it or doing anything with it or closing it. And then you're thinking about a tax increase. That's ludicrous. We've got, thank God. We've got two mills going to the water authority, and you've got a, a general manager over doing over, making over three-hundred-thousand dollars a year, and most everybody over there's doing over a hundred-grand a year. I think that, uh, we need to do something about that two mills. We got, uh, you, y'all have had no effort in streamlining this county in any way that I know of, um, bringing your cost of goods down, your cost of labor down, your cost of anything doing. Uh, you've been sitting on your hands now, I think, every one of you, since you've been, since you've been elected. Everybody talks big when they're running for office, and then after they get elected, there's not much to them. You know, that's, I'll be straight up, you know, I supported, uh, three of you, and I'm totally disappointed. You hadn't done anything. Uh, now you're asking for a tax increase. This is crazy. You need to go back, go to all your department heads, figure out how you can bring it in line without any tax increases. You need to ask for a referendum, like I've said many times, on the water authority and get rid of that two mills that we're paying the water authority. They don't need the money. They're, you, if anybody knew how that process worked, they keep borrowing money, and that's the thing, as long as they owe money, they get the two mills. They're fixing to get a, uh, a heck of an increase when it, when you do a tax increase, because their two mills, their, their money goes up too. So this is wrong. You need to take a look at each one of yourselves and just go back and what you talked to me about. Mr. Wilson, you talked to me real strong about this. You've done nothing. You've done nothing since you've been sitting there. I'm totally disappointed in you. You came to my office, and we talked about this stuff. I'm totally disappointed. Mr. Barham, Mr. Prince, Dee, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Pamela Duchenne, one thirty-six Madison Drive, Hampton. Um, so as Ms. Dee and Mr. John says, that if we left millage rate the same and property values go up, we'd probably have over five-million dollars. So I'm curious, how come we never saw a projection in, um, redundancies and how you guys are going to show that, they will sh- show how they're going to save money? Maybe that will get us to where we need to be. I'm also curious to find out, Henry County, what is the demographics? How many people are retired and elderly and on fixed incomes? How many people are under the poverty level? Where are you guys looking that you're thinking you're going to get this money from? In which demographics? That's what I have to say. I think we don't need to have an increase. You guys, they could be done between the property increase, as well as where they can find redundancies and how to job share and how they can look to reduce.
Carl Swenson, Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. Commissioners, as you can see, this was posted on July seventh at the Board of Commissioners website. I don't know why we're having this little dog and pony show here, because, uh, according to this, you've already adopted the millage rate increase, and this is a foregone conclusion. So the big question now becomes, what meeting did this board have to approve this tentatively, tentatively adopted millage rate? What meeting? And if you had such a meeting, I want to see the minutes of that meeting, because if you didn't have that meeting, then you're operating illegally as far as the open meetings law is concerned. Okay? We need to get real. These millage increases are, they're, they're, they're the biggest drain on our county that the people have. Twenty-five years, most people have gone without meaningful raises from their jobs, and yet, this county has no problem asking for ten percent every year. Now, everybody here knows who runs the county, and it ain't you. You have appointed the people that are running this county, but it falls on you for having appointed them, whether you're capable, competent, or intelligent enough to do the legwork of crafting a budget. Well, we already know the answer. You're not. So you delegate that authority. We didn't, we didn't hire you to delegate that authority. We hired you to do that job, and you're not doing it. Something is going to have to be done. Uh, some case is going to have to be drawn here against this board, because either there was a meeting or there wasn't. If there was no meeting, then somebody needs to go to jail. Because you've got staff over here that's taking it upon themselves to tell you and tell us what we're now going to have to pay. They have no problem with that, because it's their livelihood. It's their job. They want more money. We don't want to pay any more money. Don't you get it? And by the way, Ms. Lassiter, I, I got to say, that is the best Alice in Wonderland dress I have ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, Commissioners?
Good evening.
I'm Pete Paulson, forty-five Fern Road, Henry County. First of all, let me say, I'm a very strong supporter of our first responders, and we strong supporter of our first responders and we need to keep them top priority, that is fire and police. Secondly, during your campaign, I heard some sweet talk telling us that you were totally for accountability, smaller government, and lower taxes. I heard that over and over and over. I'm waiting on it. I'm jumping back just a minute because somebody just reminded me of the golf course. When we purchased that, Henry County had no problem finding the money. Shortly afterwards, I think it was, then they wanted to purchase that airport. The taxpayers were told that you had the finances to handle that fire. Then Henry Medical was sold to a peat mound at quite a substantial sum and I don't know where we stand on that money. But what kind of revenue, what kind of income do we have from the golf course and what kind of income do we have from the airport? If we have none, we don't need to be in the business of owning that kind of property. Let's get rid of it. Moving on, as in the past, when we have a budget, we have to balance the budget and in past, the budget was balanced, but shortly afterwards, they came back and they said they had a 10 million to 12 million shortfall and we don't want that again. We want to know what the budget is out front. We had an inquiry about more taxes and we were told the reason you needed more taxes is because the services have increased and of course the health, health insurance have increased and maybe we can go with users fund. But how many times are we going to have to pay for the same service over and over? I know on three different billings, I'm paying for water. We still pay for a bond that started back in 1968, I believe it was. It's long expired. It was never renewed. It is still being charged. We're still being billed for a water bond that has long been expired. I was told three years ago, I believe, that you was going to take it up and bring it before the voters so we could vote on it if we were going to renew it or not, and I haven't heard anything else on it. That water bond has long been expired and I don't think I should pay for it anymore. The reason for that water bond was-
Thank you, sir. Your three minutes has expired. So we have to move to the next individual. Thank you, sir.
Could I have one more minute?
Well, we've got, we need to move to the next individual, but thank you.
Okay, I'll put this in writing to you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm Larry Murray with Ethics in Government and I've got to take us back to the Board of Education. June, you've been telling us about how good education is in Henry County. We just had five principals fired and our administrator, he retired conveniently with a salary of sure, I'm sure. And let's see, we've had T-Splotch, we've had Splotch, we've had the maximum amount of millage that you can charge and, and the education system, and we're going to talk about this later, it is in a physical disaster. And you're going, you're going to hear a lot about that in the, in the coming weeks that you ain't even thought about. Now, Blake, with county government, if you're going to increase salaries and build fire stations and build all this stuff, you got to raise revenue. Somewhere it's got, it's got to work out that way. You can't keep going up if you don't raise revenue. You say that you don't have nothing to do with school systems. Well, if you go out there and okay 500 homes to be built like y'all have in the last two years and that new schools got to be built, all of that comes out of tax money in this county and your services go up. Police, fire, protection, all that stuff goes up. So it does cost you money. Now, either stop raising taxes, stop building houses until you get your house in order, or, now, you won't have very much income because you ain't getting subdivisions built, but we can't keep going in that direction. It won't work that way. That's what got us in the physical mess we in. And when you have a downturn, it breaks the county. I, I, I can, I know what I'm talking about. I was a county commissioner. When I went in office, it was 30% over budget. In eight months, we balanced that budget and we never had a tax increase for four years. So it can be done, but it's got to be planned. I will say this, Sherry, Brad, wherever y'all at, that's the first two I've seen planning in, since I've been here in Henry County. I, I don't know where y'all found them at, but they, they doing some, they doing some good work finally. How in the world can you plan 10 years from now when you ain't even looked at this budget in depth that you're doing now? Nobody looks at what you've done the last 10 years. How you going to know where you're going the next 10 years? You got to plan long-term. Bruce, I don't know where you at, but you better start figuring out how to bond things and plan long-term so you can know how to run your budget. And if y'all don't know, let's have a seminar sometime and I'll bring you some people in here, teach you how to run a budget.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Mark Einerson. I'm a member, excuse me, I'm a resident of Locust Grove. Not here to slam any of you guys, not here to get applause from the crowd. Would it be appropriate to invite the lady and gentleman back up, just maybe to help answer a couple of questions that I have? Would that be okay?
Well, if you'll pose your questions and then after we've had our public comment, then we'll let them respond.
Okay. In, in your presentation, you mentioned because of one or more of the Splotches, I think, that recently were enacted or completed. You, I think I understood you say that as a result of that, there were some increases that would be incurred to the budget. And I'm curious why something like that would cause such an increase? If you, if you maybe could help, help me understand that a little bit. The other thing that you guys outlined very, you know, eloquently there is the fleet replacements and the facility maintenance and things like that. I fully understand that vehicles need to be replaced and roofs need to be replaced and, and things of that nature and that's very important. And I'm wondering, like, it, it appears to me, having, this is the first time I've seen a Henry County budget, it, it appears to me like there's a ton of things happening at once and I'm not sure, like, is that because prior to now, it has not been planned? It sounds like you kind of are putting a plan in place because it seems like a whole bunch of things all at once. So I'm trying to figure out, like, why is all this at once and will there be something similar, you know, next year or the next? Or is there a plan to, to not have to have, you know, a continual large increase to cover those type of things? So I'd love some comment on that. You did mention some vehicles that county employees are driving that are approaching 200,000 miles. And again, I understand replacement and maintenance, things like that, but I'm driving a vehicle that's well over 200,000 miles and it's doing pretty good. And I would, I would, I would love a new one, but at this point, I realize I can, I can get a little bit more mileage out of what I have. So just wondering, you know, if the budget plan is to say, can we max, can we stretch things a little farther and kind of pace ourselves in putting those things together? And maybe just some comments, you know, related to that. And also, often I'm, also I'm wondering, how often is the millage increase? This is, I just completed living in Henry County for six years and I'm not sure if it's been increased while I've been here or not, but I'm just curious, is this something that gets increased every couple, three years, every decade? I'm just, would like to know how often that happens. And if there is an increase this year, you know, when would we expect maybe something like that to, to be considered again? And then I think my, my most significant question is just being a resident of Locust Grove, the percentage of increase for Locust Grove is considerably higher than the percentage of increase of anyone else. So I'm wondering how you determine for Locust Grove or any of the other municipalities, why did some, you know, are you proposing a, a real significant increase whereas some seem like a, a much smaller increase? So I would like to hear some comments on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm a resident of Hampton. I live in Southampton and my question was, and I'm not long-winded, the Toll Plaza, the Toll, I'm trying to figure out where is that money going? Are you guys getting money from that if it's being taxed and the county is getting money from that? That's, that's just my question because really, we don't need the Toll Plaza out there. I think you needed to widen the road. So that was just, that was just my question. So I'm done.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Diana Francis and I'm at 346 Vicki Lane in unincorporated Stockbridge. My question to you folks is, I, I know that in Stockbridge, well, part of Stockbridge and part of, I guess, unincorporated Henry County, you have the Eagles Landing area and they're wanting to become their own city. My question to you is, how will that affect taxes for residents here in Henry County? Because I know that each city gets a cut of taxes. So will that also cause our taxes to increase?
We'll respond after you. We're going to have the county manager to come back after all of our public comments. So if you'll continue on, we've made a note of your questions. So we'll respond later.
Okay. And, and if it does increase, have you guys considered that when you went ahead and backed their idea to come, to present it to you? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Elaitha Williams. I reside at 757 20 Henry Road in Ellenwich, which is incorporated of Henry County. My taxes have increased since I have purchased my home and it's hard for me to understand why my taxes continue to increase. One reason because the home value has not recouped back from when it dropped a number of years ago. In addition to that, we don't have any streetlights. We don't have any sidewalks. It's hard for me to understand what are we paying for and the taxes continue going up. And right now, my taxes is right at $4,000 per year. Just went up. It's 395025. Therefore, my payment's going to go greatly. I retired last year. I'm 61. Retired from my job. I was there almost 33 years. I'm a veteran. I'm a single person. At the rate you're going, you're going to tax me out of my house. I don't mind paying for services, but what am I paying for? I mean, we ought to pay for everything. I have a streetlight true enough, but I pay for it. It's in my yard. I mean, so I have trash pickup. I pay for that. So what am I paying for all this money? And how can you justify continuing raising my taxes year after year after year? But I tried to get my house refinanced. I talked to someone last week and today and they keep saying, well, Zulu says your house only valued at X amount of dollars. So I mean, how can you say it's increasing when to me, it's going down? So I don't understand. I mean, it's hard for me to understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Solomon, I was here this morning. I stayed behind Spivey Plaza, Oakwood Circle. Like I said earlier, I came from Detroit and the city near bail, I'll put it like that. And what they were doing, it's scandalous. It's just so scandalous that, that they were putting money in their pockets and doing all sorts of, taking trips and people were, were starving. People are starving and dying. Okay, so I love living here in Stockbridge. It's, I was saying how beautiful the streets are, how they take care of it. I walk my dog and I see the guy cleaning up the street in the morning. I'm proud of it. The, like he said about the automobiles, if somebody could get those automobiles up to the technology and everything and they can run, oh, I got to put this in there. When I moved here, everybody was saying how protected Stock, you know, that's a good city. You know, they don't, they don't play that in Henry County, you know? And I was like proud of that, that we got a good law enforcement here. It's a preventive step. It bothers me when I hear words like unallocated funds and, and unu, other uses. I like to, I like to know the details of what that is. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I want to know. Because I mean, I don't mind paying taxes. I don't mind paying for what I get. But I mean, I was lost getting over here this morning and I had to come down Henry County and I was, I was saying when I get there, I'm going to tell them how good I like the roads and stuff. And then I'm on Henry County and I'm like, you got to duck potholes. And it's not like Detroit and Compton where it's big roads. These are two-lane roads and you got to duck potholes. I was like, how do they get to work? Do they fly in or something? You know, so I just want to think about that. Like they were saying about how funds can be shifted from other resources. I would say, look at that first because the first thing we're going to do, I mean, I'm, this is my first time owning a home and I want to, I'm going to be on top of it. And if we find out that we're getting squirreled by the people who are supposed to be working for us, you're, we're out of here. Y'all out of here. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I, I, I love the work that you do because it looks nice around here and it's, it's safe. I can walk my dog at night, walk two, three in the morning. But I'm telling you, when you get taxes and we know that those taxes are supposed to go to the road, the road should be smooth. You know what I'm saying? You should not be unsafe going down the roads that you pay for.
Thank you.
My name is Don Henderson from McDonough, Chair Wood, Board. Basically, I've been listening to what folks saying about their tax dollar. Chair Wood, you stood in my church and by my pastor and said, I'm a God, I'm a, a woman of faith and public safety is my number one priority. How many police officers have been hired since you were elected? How many firemen have been hired? You lowered the standards. My understanding is a police officer candidate can have a DUI. He can have a GED. I think we need, the citizens of Henry County deserve better qualified candidates than that. Also, my taxes on my house this year, the assessment increased $34,000. I can guarantee you the value of my house did not go up 40,000, $34,000. You folks want money? We are just coming out of one of the worst recessions this country's ever seen because of a divisive president. Now, when we're starting to get just a, a little bit of breathing room, you folks want to take that money and spend it on a water park or a battlefield battle or whatever you want to do with it. We deserve better than that.
Hello. My name's Teresa Powell. My husband and I recently, well, a year ago, bought a lot in Locust Grove and Incorporated and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. Thank you. Couple points I want to make. You know, government exists to spend money and it's easy to spend other people's money. And one of the things that I noticed in the list that was being discussed was enhancements for a dog park, which may not be essential to running Henry County, especially during a year when we have so many things that need to be, automatic builds that need to be replaced, that sort of thing. Incidentally, I'm, I'm driving a 14-year-old car with 294,000 miles on it, so I don't have a whole lot of sympathy there. Would just like to impress upon the board that the county commissioners that, you know, as the gentleman before me said, you know, we're all coming out of a pretty bad recession. My husband and I were, took it in the shorts. We're excited to become residents of Henry County, but this is putting a bit of a damper on that enthusiasm because I have an acre and a half that I'm paying $1,000 a year for. So when I build a house on that lot, I'm looking at a lot more money. And I would just like to see more accountability and more attention to government waste and would like to specifically state that I am against any increase in the property tax here. I'd like to see, challenge the, the county to find other ways to raise that money and that may not include adding enhancements to a dog park this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Diana Batson. I live at 20 Sarah's Ben.
My name is Diana Batson. I live at 20 Sarah's Ben. I've been a resident of McDonough now since 1995. Every year, my taxes have gone up. I don't know anything really about millage. I don't really understand it. But I know that I have paid and paid and paid. And between Henry County and City of McDonough, I cannot bend over anymore. I cannot take it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Commission Board. I've been sitting here and I've been listening to the-
Your name and address, please, sir.
Louis Henderson. I'm a resident of, new resident of Locust Grove. I've been sitting here listening and there has to be a change in mentality. And the change has to be that higher taxes is not always the answer to the problems. But it seems like whenever a problem comes up, let's hit them with higher taxes. But it's not solving the problem. Good business sense, wisdom, knowledge, understanding is the solution, not higher taxes. Why do we continue to have this mindset that higher taxes will answer all of our problems? That's not the answer. You know that for yourselves. Your conscience tells you that. My conscience tells me that. Higher taxes is not the answer. It's not the solution. Doing things the best of your ability with what you have is the solution. You have to understand that as a commission board, you were elected based on what the people knew about you in voting for you. Well, you have to be people of integrity, of good character, not making promises that you had no intention of keeping. It's easy to talk. We all do that. But are you a commission, a board of commissioners with integrity, with a heart and compassion for the people that you represent? Higher taxes is not the answer. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Call in again. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, well, we'll invite back our county manager and county management team to help us respond back to the questions. And then, of course, we'll have more, further comments by the board.
Chair and Board members, there were a number of questions raised this evening and we've tried to jot down a number of the questions and hopefully I've captured everything. If there is anything that I am missing, please bring it to my attention and we will certainly respond. I will start with allowing Brad to answer a couple of questions and then I'll kind of chime in on the remaining probably 10 or 12. And then I'm going to have the Finance Director, Mr. Letta, come up and give some explanations particularly pertaining to the millage rate for the city of Locust Grove.
Cool. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll hit first on the planning aspect. One of the things that the county manager and I was recently tasked with by the board was make sure we do do planning. We do obtain some planning models in running forward that we have not previously had. We do have a strategic plan or develop a strategic plan for our budgetary processes and our service delivery models for Henry County. So we are in a process of doing things we've never done in Henry County before. Is doing some planning, long-range planning. Our budget should not be a surprise. We should stop being reactionary and start being proactive on how we do everything we do in our service delivery models. So going back to the first question on facilities, yes, our facilities have been neglected. As I mentioned earlier by several people, we did just return from the recession. That hurt everybody. It hurt employees. It hurt Henry County and things did not get done. We had roofs did not repair. We have one facility that when it rained, water comes through the facility, through the living area of the facility. So we do have issues that have been put on the back burner year after year that need to be addressed. It's really coming to a critical issue. As for vehicles, we mentioned the 200. I was clarifying that 200,000 mark and we heard plenty about public safety. We agree, 200,000 of cars running to the mailbox is different going to the grocery store than being one of our police cars with 200,000 miles. One of our ambulances, that we have several that are over 200,000 miles that are delivering patients today. We have 1995 fire trucks that are answering calls today that were spending more repair money yearly than we are replacing those units. So that is very important that just the 200,000 mile is not a marker. Now, how do we go forward? Our right-sized plan is take a assessment of every department, which our fleet manager is working on now, and see how many vehicles each department needs and we can save money that way. We can replace vehicles because we have a lot of places that don't need what we have now. Also, our goal about right-sizing our fleet is not to run them in the ground. If we could have, for example, a vehicle that we could replace in eight years and get money from that vehicle by surpleasing that equipment before we spend too much money on investment, or return on investment, we sell that vehicle for X number of dollars, return it back to our fleet replacement plan rather than using it for 10 years and getting $600 at our auction, which is a common amount for a standard car. So our bigger vehicle's a little different. You can sell a fire truck at eight years for about $200,000. You can sell one for 12 years, which we've done recently for $2,500. That's a big return on investment, by turning that money. So there are different ways we're looking at all departments. How do we move forward? What plans can we put in place to make sure we're doing the right thing as we go forward? Not reactionary, more proactive.
There were several questions raised that pertain to the SPOSS capital projects. And in my presentation, I mentioned that there were other additional costs as a result of our SPOSS projects. One thing that's important to remember is that the SPOSS capital and transportation projects and lists is voted on by the citizens of the county. And so those are projects that are identified through a tedious process and then obviously the citizens vote on what they see as those priorities. When you develop a SPOSS program and you talk about capital projects and you're building facilities, the SPOSS dollars that are collected actually go to the construction of the facility. Once that facility is constructed, you have to have operational costs because you have to have the firefighters to go into the fire station. You have to have the apparatus. You have to have the supplies. The same with your senior and rec center. You have to have employees that are going to be able to work those facilities. So we can't just build the facilities and then not provide the operation and maintenance for those facilities. We also talked about, or a question was raised in terms of the tolls that are currently on I-75. Henry County has no authority over that. That is strictly through the Georgia Department of Transportation and SERTA, which is our state role in tollway authority. Henry County receives no revenues from any of the tolls that are collected throughout the managed lanes. I believe someone asked, is the millage rate increased, millage increases this yearly? Yes. Well, not yearly for an increase, but every year the Board of Commissioners must set the millage rate. Now, what I will do is, again, place on the overhead because I think this ties into another question that was posed in relation to the increase of the millage rate. I believe an individual came up and indicated that he was a resident of the county for the last six years. And what I've tried to do is look at the millage rate and the increases from 2011 to present. If you'll look at the millage rate for 2011, it was 11.750. 2012, it was 14.5. 13, 14.97. 14, 14.238. 15, 13.873. And then 16, 12.733. What this reflects is that every year, the millage rate has gone down. So it's not showing that, we're not coming to the board every year asking for an increase. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. There was a question raised in reference to the demographics in the county and the, are we looking at everyone that's within our county? There are currently exemptions in place for our seniors that are currently within the county and our population has increased. And when you talk about an increase in population, you're going to have an increase in your services. Henry County at one time was the fastest-growing county in the nation. And today, we sit at about 221,000 citizens that reside here in the county. There was a question raised in terms of what are unallocated uses and what are other uses? Other uses are debt and debts that we have, our development authority and any transfers that we transfer out. Our unallocated uses are insurance increase that the board took on. We have our salary increases, which was the 2% across the board for all employees. And then we had the 2% increase for our public safety. There was a question raised in terms of will the creation of the City of Eagles Landing cause our taxes to increase? No, it will not. That would be on individual city. The city will have to determine what their taxes will be and what services they will and will not provide. If they're able to take on their services, they will take on those services. If they are not able to take on the services and enter into an agreement with the county, then the county will receive a rollback for those services that we provide. And that's not unheard of. We do it for various cities. We do it for the city of Stockbridge and the city of Hampton. We may provide police services. We may provide fire services, planning and zoning and building. So those are the type of services that could possibly be provided if the City of Eagles Landing is created. There was a question raised in terms, I think it was a resident from the city of McDonough, indicating that the millage rate or property taxes were continuing to go up. If the individual lives within the city limits of McDonough, the city of McDonough has raised their millage rate every year. Even with the county reducing their millage rate, because the city is raising their millage rate, then the cost will go there was a comment raised in terms of the county millage rate and the amount that the property owner is paying every year. If you look at the $250,000 example that I discussed earlier, of the amount that a property owner is paying, only 30% of that amount is for the county. Again, and I don't want to come across as if I'm saying it's all the Board of Education's fault, but I think it's important for us to understand that of the 30.6, that's only the county. The Board of Education is about 64% of what you as a taxpayer are paying on your tax allocate, or on your, for your tax dollars. So that's important to look at when you talk about the amount that you're paying in county taxes. Obviously, the school board has their taxes with the school bond and then the MNO. At this time, I'll ask our Finance Director to come up and discuss the Locust Grove millage rate increase. And then I'll ask our Tax Commissioner, Mr. Curry, to come up and address the advertisement requirements for public hearings for our millage rate settings.
Again, good evening, Board. Sherry showed a schedule about Henry County and how we got to the 13%, 13.5% increase. I just want to put this up here. This is, this is Locust Grove's, how they got to the 22.07. And same thing that Sherry showed, the 150 and a $250,000 house coming down to the 45 and 90. Their change in millage is 2.179 where ours was 1.635. And the reason for it is, is Locust Grove's millage last year, they get what we call, what they get is a rollback. And the reason they get a rollback is they also have police. So they end up, we end up as a county giving them a credit. And last year, it was 1.886. And they also had planning, zoning and building and the credit was .02. So their millage was effectively 10.827. So looking at the starting point then, the state said, we've got to, they have to reduce their millage to 9.873. Now, why that is, is because their property digest went up $220,000. When it goes up times the same rate of millage, there'll be more collections. The state says if you collect more money in any way, it's a tax increase. So we're working with semantics here. It has nothing to do with the millage being up or down. It's the state saying it should go down to keep the total taxes even. The end result is, in this case, state is saying you have to reduce it. As a result, the 9.873 is what the state is saying against last year's 10.827. .954 is what should be rolled back to get to this figure, to get to a lesser value. So on the other hand, though, if you own a house and the value didn't go up and we continue to tax at 10.827, you will pay no increase in taxes this year because it's the same millage rate times same property value. So that's one component of this 22.07. The 1% that the county is proposing is a 10% increase. What also has happened, as I mentioned earlier, is they had for police, a rollback of 1.886. This year, the computation per the SDS agreement that we have is 1.681. And the planning and zoning and building goes to zero. So there's a .225 reduction in the rollback, which is an increase in the millage. So the bottom line is that there's this 225, which is another 2.28. So as a result of all those three figures going together, it's a 22% increase. To make it simple this way, hopefully simple, if the board takes and makes the millage 12.733, Locust Grove last year was 10.827. This year, it'll be 11.052, which is a 225 increase. That's a 2% increase. That's all it will be because this 10.827, which I showed earlier, was increased, it's supposed to be decreased to be 100% as if there was an increase in the house. If the board increases it to 13.73, last year was 10.827, their millage this year would be 12.052, or 1.225 increase, which is an 11.31% increase. So where it gets tricky in trying to explain this, the state requires us to keep the total dollars the same as values go up, millage at the same rate. We're going to collect more and the state's saying, you have to tell the public you have a rate in, a tax increase and it has nothing to do with the existing millage. It's the millage going down causing that percentage as it was published to be what it is.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I apologize not being with you this morning. I was at Department of Revenue. We were looking at feasibility about going to a multi-year annual registration. Pennsylvania, South Carolina, some other states do it. Georgia's looking at having your autos renewed once every two, three years. So we, I was representing Tax Commissioners in that meeting. I understand this morning there were some questions about exemptions. County managers asked me to speak on behalf of the language used. When Governor Roy Barnes was elected, he changed how counties must advertise for property taxes. The language we use, the gentleman that brought the piece of paper up and accused this board of wrongdoing, that language is verbatim by state laws what we have to use. We didn't pull it out of the hat. Tax Commissioner didn't use it. County manager didn't use it. There's nothing secret going on. If I change one word in that language, we get a digest rejected to Department of Revenue. We don't get tax bills sent out on time. We don't get the revenue. Policemen don't get paid. It's a trickle-down effect. So my tax office follows it to the letter. When we advertise in a newspaper, we take it verbatim. The only thing we change is our county, Henry County compared to Fulton or any other county, and we change the number from last year to this year. The language we use is set by the Department of Revenue. So I could, all of us can sense the frustration from the citizens, but I want them to understand that there wasn't, there wasn't anything being done here, trying to pull the wool on anyone's eyes. That, and Governor Barnes thought that language would get the attention of citizens and I think he was probably right. Nobody wants a 22% increase in the city they live in. Nobody wants a tax increase. But we are also obligated- But we are also obligated to advertise worst-case scenario. If this board would have said, advertise 12.733, and after you met with your directors and met with the county manager and met with your citizens and you realized you needed 12.734, we have to go back through the process. We have to advertise a worst-case scenario. Of course, you have, and that's the smartest thing to do. You had a meeting this morning, you have one now, you have one next week. You get the input from the citizens. You get the input from the county manager, finance director. Then you make an educated decision. And I believe as a citizen in Henry County, been here since 1975, raised in Henry County, raised in Locust Grove, I want you to have all the information you need to make an educated decision. And I think that's all any of us can ask. With respect to exemptions, Henry County has one of the best exemptions. When I say Henry County, I'm talking in totality. The school board is very gracious to its seniors. Most seniors don't pay much in property tax. We've seen a lot of numbers here and I don't want to get off in the weeds, but if a house is worth $100,000, we tax it 40%. We tax it $40,000. Once you reach age 62, you get a $20,000 exemption. So for the county portion of your taxes, your county portion, excuse me, your school portion, your school portion for that tax bill just got cut in half. Once you reach age 65, that exemption goes to $80,000. So you live in a house of $200,000 fair market value, we tax it 40%. That's $80,000 taxable value. As far as the school system goes, you don't pay any school tax. That's 62 cents of that dollar you would have paid otherwise. In Henry County, we have a $4,000 exemption for school and state and a $15,000 for county. Disabled veterans get a $50,000 exemption. And we're seeing a lot of veterans apply for those. There was new legislation passed at the Capitol this year to help veterans get that exemption. And as, I've got a 19-year-old son in the military. They deserve everything they can get. But I, and so I'm not real sure what the question was this morning about exemptions, but Henry County is gracious from the county side and the school system side. There's a lot of exemptions out there. But if you're given that many exemptions, the tax burden falls on those that are not getting the exemptions. I think Fred went over the numbers about Locust Grove right quick. I will say that I've also got a chart for the gentleman that lives in Locust Grove that asks if the taxes have been up for the last five years. We've also got a chart. You're welcome to look at, be happy to talk to you. Taxes have not, the millage rate has not gone up. We've also got a bar graph that shows from 2009 to 2012. To Mr. Holmes, you asked a question earlier, what one mil is worth today? The one mil dropped as low as $4 million per one mil in 2012. When people get up here and ask, can we tighten our bootstraps? This county tightened its bootstraps. Forty people were laid off. Furlough days, no pay raises. When you've got less money coming in per mil, which is four million, it showed that you cut your spending. Because I don't believe anybody up here can stand and say that their senior center was closed, that their library was closed, the ballpark wasn't mowed, their little kids had a ball, a ball field to go play on. School systems, they were, they still ran. School buses still ran. So again, I know there's frustration out in the crowd. I don't like paying taxes either, but being on this side of the, I guess of the fence, I think you're doing a good job. And I think you try, I really do. I think you tried to look for ways to cut. And I appreciate the service each of you provide this county. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments from the board to our tax commissioner?
Okay, thank you. For the citizens, I'll hang around if they've got any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
One that you didn't mention. I know that there were citizens in my district that called that were laid off because they were sick or had a doctor's going through cancer and situations. And I was able to refer them to the tax office. So even if someone is sick and not working, I know that you guys have been helpful with that. And I don't know what that exemption is called, but I know there was something, they had to get something from a doctor's office saying that they were short-term disability. What was something that you guys provided?
I haven't always worn a suit. I turned 18 years old chasing cars on the Ford Motor Company assembly line. I worked out there till 2006 when they closed the plant. From 2006, 2008, I was scratching and digging and looking for work too. I know what it's like. I know what it's like working on a assembly line. I was an electrician for a little while. When somebody comes to me, and especially during those years, when they, when they come to me and say they've lost their job or they're sick with cancer... If we share the burden, I said this several years ago, if we as public servants, as a county, can share the burden, the sun will shine again one day. We just have to get through the tough times. And anybody that came to my office that was struggling, we tried to help. And sometimes I meant payment plans, sometimes it meant special exemptions, whatever we could do, we would try. I never tried to turn anybody away without helping, which is different. Some tax commissioners don't do payment plans. I'll tell you a quick story. I know people are probably ready to go home. It's nearly 8:30. But a lady came in, lived in a mobile home. She couldn't pay her property tax. It's $307 for the year. After talking to her, we realized this lady didn't have enough money to eat. Third week, she was eating soda crackers. First call we made was to the connecting Henry. Then it was senior services. Once we got her fed, then we worried about the property taxes. And that's what I'm talking about. When we got citizens that need help, we ought to be listening. And I think you do listen. I don't think there's a single person that ran for office up here that doesn't have a heart for compassion and servant. And that's what's important. But we helped that lady get back on her feet and she got her taxes paid. We got her fed first. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? Thank you, tax commissioner. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Prince?
I have some comments. First off, thanks everybody for coming out. Couple things we need to get clear. Last year, we did not raise taxes.
Please, Commissioner Prince has the floor. So thank you, Commissioner.
Last year, we did 100% rollback on taxes. We did not raise them a dime. And I think the year before, and Sherry, you'd have to check with me, I think on a $200,000 home, Henry County, the Board of Commissioners went up 14 bucks a year. So I think, this is my third year doing this, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, I think I've gone up $14 in the last two years on you. I don't really know. Is that, I don't remember the year. It was something like that.
It was a small amount, yes, sir.
So in the last two years, we've gone up $14 a year on a $200,000 house. Next thing, we have budget hearings every year. Budget hearings are where we go over every line of every item, that every dollar that we spend. Citizens come in here, we talk about everything that's spent, every dollar that's spent, where it's going, how we're getting it, where it's, where we're spending it. This year and last year, we looked at the Public Safety Pay Plan. I imagine if we polled every person in this room, 95% of the people in this room would agree with me that police officers, firefighters and EMS personnel should be making a little bit more money. Well, we heard you. We raised our salaries. We've still done that by only raising $14 on your taxes the last two years. We have three new fire stations. We, every year, when we build a fire station with your SPOSS projects, it costs 1.2, roughly $1.2 million a year to run it. Again, we've done that. Insurance, our insurance went up, what was it this year, Sherry?
$4.3 million.
Our insurance went up $4.3 million. If you don't like the insurance going up, I would recommend you call your President of the United States and complain about the way the insurance is handled and written. The next thing, the state sets property values. We, the Board of Commissioners, do not set property values. I don't get to pick. There's an assessor and the state comes in and checks us based on property values. We don't have anything to do with the property values. So again, I appreciate everybody coming out, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands the $14 or so on a $200,000 house increase you've had in the last two years has pretty much all gone to your police officers that are standing right there and your firefighters. So I appreciate everybody coming out, but I just thought you might want to know that. And Sherry, would you look up the number, how much on a $200,000 house? Because we didn't go up on taxes last year. And the year before, it was, it was lower?
And I think it's also important to note that if your values didn't go up, the millage rate went down. So there would not have been any increase to you as a property owner.
Fred, do you know the number?
Sherry just said that the answer is that as the building went down, the value didn't go up. Your property, your property taxes were going down.
Gotcha.
Okay, other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barnes?
Sherry, I reiterate what I said this morning. I appreciate the job that you and Brad and staff has done presenting this. Over the last five years, one of the best ones I've seen. I thought y'all did a great job. And I also want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. It lets us know that you're interested and you want to be involved and we want you to be involved. We want to hear from you. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Commissioner Barnes, thank you for your hard work and staff. You put a lot of time and prepared this presentation and thank you for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Clemmons?
And I just want to say to the citizens that came out tonight, I just want to challenge you to continue to be an advocate for your community. Many of you may or may not know who your commissioners are that are sitting up here, but each of us are representing different districts except for our chair who's at large. But make sure you know who your commissioners are. Make sure you know who's representing you so that you can contact your commissioners when you have concerns. We also have meetings every first and third Tuesday. And I know some of you, all this is your first time, but we would love to have you here so that you can see how we operate, how we work, how we vote on your behalf as well.
All right. Okay. I'd like to add, this is my first budget cycle, millage rate hearing. And first of all, I do appreciate everyone who's come out, those that came out this morning, those that came out this evening, and hopefully we'll have even more to come out on July the 27th. And what we've got to understand is, as has already been alluded to, we're trying to do better. And this county is changing and it is growing. And when we hear that we're spending more money maintaining vehicles than it would have cost to get something, especially if you've got police services and fire services that need good equipment to get to your homes if there is an emergency so that they're not sitting on the side of the road, we're going to take a look at that. You've already heard that we've got to continue to pay attention to public safety, to retain and to recruit. But I'm going to tell you, we're seeing that same challenge in other departments. Because again, we're literally kind of coming, trying to play catch-up for such a growing county. And again, the process that I've seen, I remember the first time, first go-around that we had in the budget meetings. And we said, we got to go back because we're not in favor of a big, or in favor of a tax increase. Because we need you to go back and challenge yourselves and bring us the most critical things. That's what we hear. I saw them go back. They went from the 5 million...
200,000.
200,000, 1 million. And they came back. And this included public safety as well. And so there are some strategic thoughts that are going on. We've got to think about not just today, but where we're also going. Because we want you as citizens to have the best services. We want you to feel good that we're doing the best. And this board is only about six months old, but I'm going to tell you, yes, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. There's a lot of questioning. And we're asking, we're not going to do things just the way they've been done in the past. Because we wanted to think ahead to take care of you, the citizens. So again, we appreciate the input that you've given. Again, I guess it was advertised that almost, some people perceived that the decision had already been made. It has not already been made. That's why we're here today, earlier, and here we're here now to hear from you. So as we're sitting here and gathering good information, staff and tax commissioner, tax assessor, we thank you all for at least bringing the information that we had questions from before. And I'm sure there's going to be some more questions before July the 27th. Because again, we want to make sure that we're gathering as much information that we can. So again, we appreciate, again, all of those that have come out. If there's no other further comments, I'll open the floor for a motion to adjourn. We got a motion?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Everyone, please have a good night. Thank you.